Welcome to the regular meeting of the Forsyth County Board of Commissioners. We will have a briefing session following this meeting. And I think a lot of this is going to be interesting to just about everybody who's watching on Channel 13 and those who are in the Commissioners' meeting room right now. I did have somebody ask me one day this past week, who is sitting up there with the Commissioners? And why don't they vote? Well, they were talking about the county manager Dudley Watts over here. And Dudley is, if he wasn't here, we wouldn't really, to be honest with you, we wouldn't have a clue what we're doing. Thank you, Dudley. And over here, it's Ashley Sloop, and she is the clerk to the Forsyth County Board of Commissioners, which means if he's not doing his job and we're not doing our job, she's the only one that knows what's going on. So you get a pretty good idea. We have a couple of professionals, one on the left, one on the right, one's male, one's female, and are all very helpful to us. Now, having said all of that, I'm going to turn the meeting over to our Vice Chairman, Don Martin.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and good afternoon. We're going to begin our meeting today with an invocation from Reverend Bruce Bedecker of the River of the Nation's Ministries, and then we're going to follow that by the Pledge of Allegiance led by Commissioner Tanya McDaniel. And please stand if you're able. And Reverend Bedecker, please come forward.
Thank you. Could we pray? Heavenly Father, we thank you for your faithfulness and your mercy since the birth of our nation. We are grateful for the men and women who have led us along the way. We appreciate the service of the county commissioners and their dedication to citizens of our community. Give them wisdom and guidance as they deal with the various issues that come before them, and bless them and the work they do. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Citizens who are wishing to participate in the public session part of the meeting, that's not the public hearing which will come before that, you will be placed on hold. By the way, if you want to participate remotely, please call 336-422-1200, and you will be placed on hold until the public session begins. For those of you in the audience that want to speak during the public session, which occurs after our hearings, you actually need to have a card filled out. And actually, Mrs. Sloop, our clerk, actually has those cards. If you have not already filled one out, and you will be called in the order, she has the cards, and she'll just do them randomly, one at a time. With that said, we're going to, every meeting now, we used to have it also in our briefings, but every meeting twice a month, Joshua Swift, our Director of Public Health, gives us a COVID-19 update, and he is here. Nice to see you in person instead of on Zoom today.
Yes, thank you. Thank you for having me. Chairman, Vice Chairman, Commissioners, appreciate this opportunity to give a brief update regarding COVID-19. Our cases over, Ashley's going to keep me straight, Chairman.
Thank you, Chairman.
That's another example of the value of the clerk to the Forsyth County Board of Commissioners. There we go.
There we go.
Appreciate it. All right. So just a brief update today for you. Our cases over the last 14 days, we've seen a decrease, we're at 3%. So it has sort of leveled off pretty much over the last 14 days. Our deaths over the last two weeks have decreased, continue to decrease, 40%. The BA2 variant that we've been keeping a watch on over the last few months is now the predominant variant across the United States. We're watching that variant. We're also watching, monitoring an uptick in cases in those counties around us, directly neighboring counties of, we've seen in Stokes, Yakima, and Guilford County, they're starting to see an uptick in cases, so we're monitoring that as well. And also wanted to make the Commissioners aware of the One Nation Art Project. Winston-Salem is one of nine cities in the U.S. that was chosen to pilot a national arts and wellness project focused on arts engagement with the historically marginalized population and how the COVID-19 pandemic affected those historically marginalized populations. So this is led by the Arts Council and the UNC School of the Arts, but Public Health is one of the partners participating. And if you remember, at the fairgrounds at our mass vaccination clinic, right at a year ago, we had a partnership with the Arts Council and local musicians and artists. They came in and played and performed. Also, they did that at Novant at their Haynes Mall location. So some metrics, it's a little bit of a different way to show the metrics. You can see the week of March 27th through April the 2nd, we had a total of 94 cases, and we had a 2.8% positivity rate. So we're seeing those level off. We're almost where we were last June and July when we literally had less than 40 or 50 cases per week. So we're at quite a sustainable rate. Our COVID hospitalizations, we keep track of that, there's only five Forsyth County residents in Forsyth County hospitals with COVID at this time. The booster shots, those became available this week. We started offering those based on the CDC's recommendations, therefore immunocompromised individuals and people over the age of 50 who received their initial booster dose at least four months ago to be eligible for that vaccine. Also, I don't have the list here because it's very long. Immunocompromised can be varied, it can be smokers, current or former smokers, persons that are overweight or obese, diabetes, heart disease, it's quite a large group. And we have seen an uptick in individuals coming in to get vaccinated. Before, this was approved by the CDC, a typical day, it got down to where it was 15 or 20 people, some days as little as 10. Now we're seeing around 100, 120 people per day coming in. We continue to have the at-home tests available, that you can come to the Health Department at 799 Highland Avenue, as well as the 10 branches of the Forsyth County Library. So we appreciate that partnership. And last but not least, really just making you aware, this is National Public Health Week, it's always the first full week in April, every year. There's a resolution that'll be coming across your desk pretty soon, about Public Health Month for April, but really just wanting to brag on the great work that Public Health Department does and the staff that are working, you know, 365 days a year. These are some of the statistics. Obviously, we gave over 150,000 doses of COVID-19 vaccine in 2021, well over 120 community outreach events. That's a big part of our focus, is how we can go out into the community. And then you can just see the list of, from our dental clinic to our main clinics, our food and lodging inspections. You know, we like to say that public health affects this community, and we touch the community every way, every day in some way. So be happy at this time to take any questions or comments.
Thank you very much. Any questions for Health Director?
I have one. Great job, by the way, thank you. To assure our constituents, we are prepared should there be another boost in COVID cases with BA2 or any other variant. But are we prepared for that?
Well, we have had conversations with our state partners to make sure that our local vendors, one is Star Med, they're still offering vaccine and testing at the location of, it is, the name is slipping me now, it's our Bishop Max Church, Union Baptist Church. They're still offering that five days per week, as well as we have that infrastructure still in place at the Health Department, where we can easily see more people for vaccine, but also testing that Novant and Baptist, you know, they've had to, yes, we have, we have over 120-day supply of PPE. And I would just also say, Emily Austin, our Preparedness Coordinator, has been working with emergency management and county department heads and working on our, make sure we have enough stockpile.
One question, Mr. Vice Chair. There was a rumor spreading, Josh, that we only had one type of booster available. Please clarify that rumor, please.
Thank you, Commissioner Elamene. We have both Moderna and Pfizer available for booster, and you can get Johnson &amp; Johnson as well, but we have both.
Okay. And last, just to congratulate you on the report, but I saw a blurb about Novant Health Center having a mobile unit going through the neighborhood for, quote, marginalized communities. Are they coordinating that with your department on any level, or is that a separate entity altogether?
Well, they are working, there is, one, I was actually fortunate enough to go out to today's woman at Boston Thurman and see the unveiling of it and got to tour it yesterday. It's a great, beautiful piece of equipment that they have to go out into the community. So really excited about that. And I know there is a mobile, basically a mobile clinic committee that one of the Assistant Health Directors sits on now, so they can coordinate and make sure they're not on the same corner at the same day, so to make sure that there's a collaboration. Baptist has a unit, Winston-Salem State University has a unit as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Josh.
Let me ask this question, Joshua. In the, you know, we're over 70%, I guess, of fully vaccinated, and in that definition used to, it only included the first and second, you know, original vaccination shots. Is that changing to include booster, one booster, two boosters, or is that still the same, that 70% issue?
Yeah, so the 70, it's actually 72% the last time we looked, or last week, it was 72% of individuals are fully vaccinated, which is two doses of Moderna or Pfizer, or one dose of Johnson &amp; Johnson. Now the CDC, it's a subtle change in their language, is are you up to date on your vaccines? So you could have had those two doses of Pfizer last year, but now have you had your boosters? And if you're immunocompromised, have you had that other booster? So that's the number we're working on. Right now, we know this is the raw data, is that about over 100,000 people in the county have gotten a booster dose? But the CDC nor the state has broken it down, like you've seen with the other data, where we could say by race and by age, where you could see fully versus partially vaccinated. We, they have not got that data to us. We are seeing, something you see across the country is less people have gotten the booster, and we really encourage people. You know, the three things right now, masking if you feel you need to mask, or the situation. It's not a yes or no, it's different situations. So masking when you feel appropriate, getting tested, like we have the test, and then vaccine, really the vaccine is the most important.
So just remind me, on the herd immunity part, is that, is that number in the 70% kind of issue?
Well, Dr. Martin, that's, really, we're trying, I mean, there is no magic number because we see, you know, even as people are fully vaccinated, as time lingers, you know, we're starting to see people have those breakthrough cases. I do think there is some herd immunity from the reason why we're not seeing as many cases now, because so many people have either had COVID, been vaccinated, or some combination of both. But still, we encourage people to get the vaccine and be up to date with the vaccine.
That's good. Well, any other questions for Joshua?
Yes, Vice Chairman, if you, if I may. Joshua, I had a question because I wasn't quite sure how we were going to be getting the data back. Can you hear me? I wasn't quite sure how we were going to get the data back with the at-home tests. So that means if individuals are taking that test, where does the results go? And are you only getting the results back via, if they're positive? Or how do you know how many at-home tests are actually being?
We don't, we don't. There is no mechanism from the state or any other county to measure that. We get the laboratory confirmed test, so if you go to Union Baptist and are tested, you go to Novant, Atrium, Urgent Care, we get that, but we don't get where you pick up at-home tests, either CVS, the library, the Health Department, no. We would encourage people that do that, though, if they are positive, obviously, to reach out to people that they've been in contact with and to isolate.
Okay, fair enough. And National Public Health Week, so thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions? As always, thank you, Joshua, for being here, and, you know, I imagine we'll continue our every meeting updates for some time as we anticipate, perhaps, I've just been reading the national news, what's going on in particularly in Great Britain, and what's going on in China. There clearly are some really hotspots, if you will, again, with increased numbers, so certainly stay on top of it. And I feel, obviously, I think probably everyone feels better than they ever did about it in the last two years. So thank you for your continued vigilance and hard work.
Thank you, appreciate this, all the Commissioners, thank you.
Good, thank you. The first item on the agenda today is a public hearing on the zoning request of Elizabeth McCracken, Philip Eldridge McCracken, Timothy J. McCracken, and Wes Bradford Schultz from AG to RS9. Agriculture two lots of basically 9,000 square feet. The first speaker of the public hearing will be Kirk Arison. He's with the Planning and Development Services, and we're ready for the review. Thank you, Kirk.
Thank you, Vice Chairman Martin. Good afternoon, Chairman Pliler and members of the county commissioners. This is case F1612. The site is roughly 11 acres located on the north side of Ogden School Road, west of Davis Ridge Road. This is a special use rezoning from the agriculture district to RS9 residential single-family 9,000-square-foot lots with a special use site plan. I'll go over this fairly briefly, since you've already had two briefings on this, but this is the growth management plan map. The black dot represents this site, which is in Growth Management III, the suburban neighborhoods area, and it's close to the town of Kernersville zoning jurisdiction. This is the location map showing the 500-foot notification radius for property owners that were notified of this rezoning, and the site in question in yellow. This is the aerial showing the subject property. Again, there is largely undeveloped property at this point. There is a historic structure on the site that would have to be photo documented prior to new development, but again, the area is fairly sparsely developed at this point. Some site photos, looking west on Ogden School Road, the subject property is on the right side of the road. This is a shot looking east down Ogden School Road. The proposed location to the site is on the left. This is looking west up Ogden School Road. The proposed location of the main entrance is on the right side of the photograph. And this shot is looking east down Ogden School Road. The subject property begins at the pink flag shown on the left side of the road. Just an area plan recommendation map in terms of future land use. This is indicated in yellow, which is single-family residential. I will point out, the site is next to a large mixed-use area that's in the town of Kernersville zoning jurisdiction. That's the Weldon Community that has had a lot of development happen further to the north, but hasn't happened at this location as of yet. This is the site plan for the proposed development, a standard conventional subdivision, and there are connections proposed to the north and to the west as future development comes along. Just a brief summary, this request is consistent with the low-density residential land uses recommended by the area plan. The subject property is within the Growth Management Area III suburban neighborhoods area with access to public water, and the site is served by a minor thoroughfare, Ogden School Road, with ample vehicular capacity. This was heard by the planning board at their February 10th public hearing. There were no speakers in opposition to this case, and the board voted unanimously to recommend approval of the request. Site plan does meet UDA requirements, and I'm glad to answer any questions at this time.
Could you comment just a little bit more on the traffic? As I understand it, I think we had a little discussion last week about sort of the traffic, in fact, actually, we got sent a traffic study I looked at this week. It says that essentially the future traffic in that area is likely, our current road system is kind of likely to fail. And while this is another, whatever it is, 2,500 trips a day, is something that's going to have to be done, so as a result of that, it's okay to make it worse because something will be done at some point in the future. Is that kind of the, is that, is that an oversimplification of how to think about why that would be okay to have an additional 2,500 cars when we already have a system that will fail in the future?
So Vice Chairman Martin, as you mentioned, there was a transportation impact study done as part of this site that was reviewed by Jeff Vansler, who is in the City Department of Transportation, who reviews those for us on the planning board. What he said is, the short answer is yes, there's a roundabout that's going to be installed at Teague Road and Ogden School Road to the west of the site. Once the Caleb's Creek development, another mixed-use development in Kernersville, has the fourth leg of that roundabout open, regardless of this subdivision, it would go down to substandard levels of service. That being said, Jeff believes that some of the modeling assumptions in that traffic study may not be accurate in terms of the way trip generation will actually pan out. He believes that there'll be more trips going to the east towards Highway 66 than that study takes into account in its modeling. So in his estimation... its modeling. So in his estimation, he doesn't see any issue with the trip generation proposed from this development as being the proverbial straw that would break the camel's back.
What is the likely anticipated timing on the other Caleb's Creek properties? I, I'm trying to, I want to get, like, how, how far in the future was he kind of speculating in those assumptions?
So that was something that we didn't have, that information as part of this TIS, because again, it depends on when the developer who's working on that project decides to initiate that particular phase. That being said, I think, based on development patterns in Kernersville and kind of the demand, I would think within the next five years would probably be reasonable for that to go online. But again, this is a lot of speculation, and it's hard to get engineers to commit in the world of speculative things.
And the other questions that were asked last week in particular talked about the sewer issues. And, and clearly, there is no public sewer available, and, and the, and the plan is to install, you know, its own, own private treatment area, and try to pump it to a station and get access, which is not too far away, I guess, in the Abbott's Creek area. And I think this group, this board expressed some concerns about the specifications to which that lift station may be built, the maintenance and operation of that, because I know all of us have, have heard in the last probably four, five years, different issues that were done 15 and 20 years ago, that are now have reached crisis points, whether it be subdivision roads, or, or, you know, septic tank issues, or drain, ever how the sewer acts. If the sewer's a part of the sewer, not an issue. And other sort of water maintenance issues and so forth. And, and it's kind of like people come to us and say, well, what were you all thinking back when this was approved? I mean, what kind of, where were people going? And since this, the sewer is so important, and clearly, the county has maintained its own, you know, kind of lift stations, and as a part before being taken over by the, the city-county utilities, et cetera. It's a, it's an important proposition, and they do fail, and there are a lot of problems. So we do have some information from the Courtney Driver, the director of the Utilities Commission, that basically says, you know, right now, there's no provisions to guarantee that there's no plant extensions at all in that area of the sewer. And the best advice that appears in that letter is that, well, if the developer were to build the sewer station to the specifications of the city-county utilities, it would be a lot easier to take over in the future, should that happen. And, and she also mentioned there's a future master plan under development at the moment. So obviously, that could be a, a future part. And there are also some issues about the proximity to Kernersville, and whether to the town limits, whether there's some advantage to being kind of voluntarily annexed into Kernersville to maybe improve that likelihood. And, and, and that, I can't speak at all to the Kernersville's issues, and that she was just sort of speculating on that. So anything else that you'd like to sort of add in clarity to that about the sewer, sort of what challenges really for the future, not for the immediate?
So, Dr. Martin, you're 100% correct. We did talk to Courtney Driver, CCUC Director. And as you can see my cursor here, this is the private lift station to the west of the development site plan, and that would push development further to the north, towards the creek where there is a public sewer outfall. And you're absolutely right. We've certainly been familiar with other communities in Forsyth County that have had their private systems fail, and they petitioned for sewer to be extended, or city-county utilities to take those facilities over. That being said, Courtney says there is nothing in our infrastructure standards or other development-related ordinances that could force a private developer to build those to our municipal standards. But again, that's certainly a policy direction that the county commission is welcome to kind of explore further. And Courtney does recommend that the developers of the subdivision do build their infrastructure to city-county standards, so that if something did happen in the future, they could entertain taking that over. With regard to the town of Kernersville and potential annexation, our staff hasn't had any conversation with the elected leadership of Kernersville, but as you noted, that may put some extra heft in proposals to get that on the municipal system.
Good. Any other questions? Eric?
Just one question, Mr. Vice Chair. What standard are they using to build this sewer treatment plant? If they're not using city-county, what are, what are they using as a guidepost?
So basically, there is standard engineering specs that basically, if you just contract with a private civil engineer, they can build a lift station or any other sewer system to a functional standard from an engineering standpoint. Courtney wasn't explicit in terms of what design things would need to change, whether it would need to be the amount of gallons per day that something could process, or the diameter of lines. I believe Mr. Greg Garrett with Development Entity is in the audience. He may have more information on that, but that's all staff can answer at this point.
Other questions? Eric, thank you for your report. Very, very thorough, very prepared. Thank you. All righty. This is a public hearing, and speakers will have up to 15 minutes total to speak in favor of this request, and up to 15 minutes total to speak in opposition. So we'll, and let's make sure, the last hearing we had, want to be perfectly clear that this is those folks speaking in favor of the request. So I'll, I'll get my timer out, and we'll get ready to go. And you may just come up one at a time, and please give us your name and address, and we'll be, we're ready.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is Greg Garrett, and I am the development consultant for Sugarert Homes. They are the applicant for this petition, along with the, the property owners. And we have been working for many, many months on this project, and think we've, we've come up with a really good use for, for the land. I'm also joined here today by my civil engineer, so if we start getting into a technical area, I would like to bring him up. And then also, I, there was, we got our wires crossed. This is, this is great to be in person. I'm thrilled, I'm thrilled. However, my seller was thinking it was still virtual, and so the property owner is actually online, called in. I don't know if he's able to, to speak. If not, it's okay. I know what he would like to tell you, so I could speak on his behalf. But I think he's in queue on, on the, on the phone. So I don't know how you would proceed with that, but I certainly have remarks to share. And if I need to add his remarks to mine, I, I'm more than willing to do that.
Well, I guess we could, I guess it's kind of the pleasure. That was one of the best speeches you've ever made. I'll try again. I suspect it's the pleasure of this board, whether we would like to accept a, I mean, I'm looking over at our attorney, whether it's an issue to accept a telephonic portion of our public hearings. We've never done that before, but...
There's no issue. I would, I would ask the clerk if that's possible. I don't know what the queue looks like.
Mr. Vice Chairman, we have one caller.
And that's probably the owner. So, but does that please everyone? Does anyone object to hearing a telephone conversation from the, or presentation from the caller, from the owner, owners?
Go for it.
All righty, that's great. Do that now, before continuing? Okay?
Yeah, that'd be great. And I would just like to point out that this case, 1612 and 1613 are both related. He's the, the owner, one owner representative.
And certainly could speak to both of those.
Yes, that's right. Okay, thank you.
You are now available. Thank you. Mr. McCracken?
Yes?
Hello, this is Ashley Sloop. You are speaking to the Forsyth County Board of Commissioners. Please state your name and address for the record.
Okay. Ready to go now?
Yes, sir.
Okay. This is Philip McCracken. My address is 3520 Honeywood Drive, Johnson City, Tennessee. Zip code is 37604. And Greg thought it might be helpful just to speak on behalf of the sellers and provide a brief history of the property. The Ogden School Road property has been in our family since 1884. Our great-grandfather, John Bodenheimer, bought the property. Our grandparents, Elmer Bodenheimer and Mary Skeen Bodenheimer, were married in 1921 and lived on, in a house on the 4.9-acre tract that is the first one you see on the right when entering from, from 66. The Ogden School was built in 1885. Mr. Ogden moved down from up north, and he donated a library to the school with the understanding that the school would be named after him. Later, the road was named for him as well. The school closed in 1928, so it was used as a school for about 43 years. In 1929, our grandparents bought the school property and used it for a rental home for several years. The Hudson family was the first family to rent the house from them. We've inherited the property and have been paying taxes on it for many years. Donors are scattered from Winston-Salem to as far as Arizona. As time goes on, the number of heirs increases, and the process to sell it becomes more difficult. So we felt like this is a good time to sell to a reputable buyer, such as Clayton Properties Group. That's what I have.
Good. Thank you for that background. Got it.
Thank you.
I'll just remind you, we, we have 10 minutes left in our positive comments, so.
Thank you, yes. So as Mr. McCracken pointed out, this property has been in their family for well over a century. Lots of changes have taken place out there. And, you know, this is an area that's known as the, the heart of the triad. And what we're presenting here today, I believe, is in, in keeping with the other development patterns of this area. You have Caleb's Creek, you have Weldon, both Kernersville, very, very large projects. And we have spent a lot of time, specifically me, meeting with neighbors. The way I like to do it is I put in personal phone calls to every adjoining property owner. And then I send letters with my contact information to everyone else that's on the county mailing list. But if you adjoin the project, I, I put in a personal phone call, and I've had a lot of great conversations. And on this one, have encountered no resistance. Everyone seemed to understand that there is a big growth change happening in the area, and they were, you know, willing to, to just yield any, any comments on the project. However, I, I can speak to some of the concerns about the, the private lift station, as well as the TIA. I'm not a traffic engineer, but we certainly could talk about if you still have concerns. But on the, on the sewer, this is not something new to Forsyth County. I've done a couple of projects. Most recently, there's one on Yackenville Road. This is inside the city limits of Winston-Salem, right next to Greenbrier. But that project has a private lift station. And what I can tell you is, the state has the governing authority over that private lift station. There's a long list of specifications that we have to adhere to, including the monitoring of the system on, on a, on a weekly basis. There are technologies that we have to utilize in putting the pump station in. So if the pump were ever just to fail, then, then there's a call list where the computer will call multiple people to let them know that it needs to be looked at. And of course, that's well before you have anything flowing over. They, they have alarm on the actual pump station itself. And, and so the way that we have done this in the past, and the way I'm proposing to do it here, is that the state would review all of our plans, they would permit it, and then, and then we have to show them ultimately, the ownership would go to the homeowner association. And so they look over the restrictive covenants to make sure everything legally is there. And then there, like I said, there is a company we have to, we have to hire, the HOA has to hire a company that is responsible, that gets that phone call if something doesn't work, and goes out there on a weekly basis. There's also a generator that they would either bring or put there on the property. So if, if there's power issues, they have an alternative power source. So, long story short is, you know, the state has a pretty good program for this. It's, it's all administered through North Carolina DEQ, which is actually the same governing authority for our own Forsyth County Utilities Commission. So just, if you have more questions about that, happy to answer. You know, just real briefly, we're talking about, you know, 26 homes or less, and, you know, right at about two and a half homes per acre, very much in keeping with the, with the area and the growth patterns that are occurring on Ogden School and, and the surrounding areas. Happy to answer any questions you might have.
Just a short one. On the issue of when the equipment begins to, you know, in the future, in that, in the lift station begins to need replacement, generator needs to be replaced, et cetera. And I just want to make sure that homeowners have said that in the, and if you just did this on Yackenville, and I'm, I'm familiar with that subdivision fairly small, but I'm kind of curious about, that homeowners always understanding that there may be an assessment in the future as these, I mean, there's ongoing maintenance part, but then there's the inspection part and the weekly review. But then there's going to be the issue of replacing pieces of this in the future as they begin to fail. And I'm just worried about folks being, understanding what they're getting into, so they're not coming back later saying, well, I didn't know this, particularly when, when John Smith sells it to Joe Smith on his own, and Joe doesn't realize what John's got himself, what he's got himself into, because John didn't tell him.
Absolutely. And it's something that we, as a developer and builder, want to be sure we do our part in educating the homeowners. The first thing that initiates that is the dues are going to be significantly higher, because they have this ownership of this lift station, just like if you were to buy into a townhouse community, and you're like, wow, I, I was paying $200 a year in my single-family community, now I'm, I'm paying that, you know, per month. And, well, the reason being is because at some point, that roof is going to need to be replaced, or the parking lot's going to need to be paved. So also, are we doing that in this neighborhood, except the capital reserve line item is lift station repair? And then also, there's this operational line item where we're paying this licensed operator to come out weekly to inspect the system and make sure everything is, is running as it's supposed to. So, yes, it will be disclosed in the, in the restrictive covenants, and we, as developer, builder, will, you know, make sure that we do our job in communicating that. Now, what the homeowner hears, I can't promise that. But we, we know, we don't want to, we don't want to get in the middle of a situation where the expectation wasn't set properly.
Last short question. Is that the amounts that are set in that, for those, like you say, $200, or whatever it is, and the part that's going to go for capital, the part's going to go for operational, operation current and in the future? Are those regulated by the state, the amounts that are set? Or is that, is there, who is the rate setter on, on those things?
To be honest with you, my most recent one was the Rutherford development there on Yackenville Road. And I do not remember there being a whole lot of input from the state on that aspect of it. But what I can tell you is, the last thing we want to do is to, to put together an HOA that's, that's destined to fail. And so, but I, I can't tell you that, that there is a review agency on those, those amounts that are reserved. I'm sorry.
Good. I, I appreciate that.
I have a question.
Yes. Commissioner Neville?
We got some information yesterday from the manager's office, and came from planning about sewage, and it was still a little bit unclear to me. It's described as a lift station, a private lift station. And then also, the term "force main" was used. And I take it to be the force main is because it's, it's got to go And I take it to be the force main is because it's got to go upgrade and go into, I'm not sure whose lines they are, whether they're Kernersville or part of the county system. So it was still a little bit unclear to me. I understand the private part of it. Lift station is a lift station and the force main, the affluent, just going through the lift station and going into the pipelines and then eventually treated by the city-county?
Yes, sir. Exactly as you said. We were just moving the affluent into the county system where it gets treated, but the lift station as well as the force main, that pressurized line that takes it from the big well at the lift station to the public line, the, all of that is private. And like I said, Rutherford is how we did that. We worked all of that out with the city engineering and where the lines need to go and all that.
Good. Other questions? And we have just a few seconds. Anybody else wishing to speak in favor?
Like I said, my civil engineer is here. If you have technical questions, he's designed several of these pump stations in the past.
Appreciate it. Thank you. No one else? All right. I had 24 seconds to spare. All right. Now, is there anyone, we've just, is there anyone wishing to speak in opposition to the petition? Exactly, we'll have the same thing for 15 minutes. And please come forward, just take turns if there are more than one, and just tell us your name and your address. Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? See, no one?
Seems to be one person.
Oh, is there one? Please come forward, sorry.
So we would actually like to speak in opposition of the adjoining one, the 16, I think this is 1612, 1613. I'm going to speak on 1613. Should I wait? Okay, thank you.
Okay. It'll be next, so you're good. So no one else for the first one, the one that we're doing here, on the east, I guess on the east side of the road? All righty. So now, no one, there's, so basically, the hearing is now closed. And I have one comment I'd like to make before entertaining a motion. And I do appreciate the information, particularly on the lift stations, the state regulations, et cetera. And clearly, it has been done before. And I'm just curious, does this board have any desire to consider any other policies that would, for example, require, you know, specifications to be at the same, be the same, and we don't know how different they are, with our own city-county utilities? If there's any interest in discussing that further or in having such a policy, then I'd be happy to entertain a motion or to make a motion to table. But if there's not, I guess I need to know whether we're ready to prepare to address it or to take a look at any further discussion or activity relative to this issue about requirements for lift stations.
Mr. Vice Chair, I have one concern. Even though we have a standard from the professionals on lift stations, you know, specs, I'd like to see what the city-county specs are in terms of lift stations and compared to.
Well, we could certainly do that and actually do that, probably have that information within two weeks. And I'll ask our attorney, I do not believe we need to hold the hearing again. We could remove this from the table, put it back on the agenda and actually act at that time. Is that not correct?
You could, depending on whether or not you want to hear additional comments regarding anything. So you could just hold it open.
Well, Commissioner Alamein, do you wish to entertain such a motion to table until we have that review done?
Sub moment, Mr. Vice Chair.
I'll second it. Any further discussion? All in favor of tabling, please raise your hand. If I can carry unanimously. All righty. Okay. The next item on the agenda is a public hearing on the zoning request, again, of Elizabeth McCracken, Philip Eldridge McCracken, Timothy J. McCracken, and W. Bradford Schultz, Tracy B. Knuckles, J. Devon Shropshire, and the Shropshire Family Trust, again, from AG Agriculture to RS15, residential 15,000 square foot lots. And again, the first speaker will be Eric, excuse me, Kirk Erickson, Erickson, from Planning and Development Services, so.
Thank you again, Commissioners. Again, briefly, some background on this case. This is a legacy growth management plan map showing this site is in the suburban neighborhoods area adjacent to the town of Kernersville. This is the location map showing the 500-foot mailing notification radius and the subject property in yellowish-orange. This is an aerial showing that the current state of the property is a combination of fields and trees and a few structures, but largely undeveloped. Just briefly, some site photography. This is looking west on Ogden School Road. The subject property is on the left side of the road. This is looking east down Ogden School Road towards NC66. This is the proposed location of the main entrance for the subdivision on the right side of the photograph. This is a shot looking west up Ogden School Road towards Teague Lane. The proposed location of the main entrance for the subdivision is on the left side of the image. And finally, looking east down Ogden School Road from the proposed secondary entrance for the subdivision on the right side of the image. And one more photograph, looking west on Ogden School Road from the proposed secondary entrance for the subdivision on the left. Again, this is the area plan, land use recommendation map showing that this site and much of the surrounding area is recommended for single-family residential. The blue on the parcel is the Serbian Orthodox Church that's in place. And as mentioned on the previous case, the magenta area is the Weldon Community in the town of Kernersville. This is a site plan for the proposed development. Again, as was previously mentioned, this is in tandem with the development that you just saw in F1612. However, this one is much larger and has a little over 200 proposed lots. This is also done as a planned residential development rather than a conventional subdivision and as such would include publicly accessible open space at various locations for residents of the development. And much like the previous development, this uses a combination of a private lift station and force main going into off-site public utilities. In summary, the request is consistent with the low-density residential land uses recommended in the area plan. The subject property is within that growth management area three suburban area and it does have access to public water. And the site is served by a minor thoroughfare with ample capacity. This was heard by the city-county planning board at their February 10th public hearing and there was one speaker in opposition. Her concerns focused primarily on stormwater and drainage issues, along with the loss of privacy and reduced, potentially reduced property values. After hearing that testimony, the board did vote unanimously to recommend approval of this request and the site plan does meet UDO requirements. I'm happy to answer any questions at this time.
Questions for Kirk?
I'm good.
What? Oh, I'm sorry. That's all you wanted. I thought you were going to ask a question.
Question.
Question. Question, Commissioner Linville.
As far as erosion control matters, in the regulations, it's supposed to be in place. It takes care of that. I know people have concerns about the erosion matters and all over the place, but there are regulations in place in regard to residential development and commercial development. Is that correct?
That's correct, Commissioner Linville. And in fact, we had a response from Matthew Osborne, who is the planning board's staff member, is actually in erosion control, but he deals with all our erosion control evaluation for our site planning process. And in his estimation, there wouldn't be any inappropriate discharge or other negative effects from stormwater facilities on site that would cause exacerbations of erosion control problems to the south, which is where the property owners in question lived.
Is there not, if you go to the next slide, is there not a drainage pond there? Is that a drainage pond at the very bottom?
Yes. So what's going on here, Commissioner Martin? As you can see, these lines here and here, there's two stormwater ponds and those, after controlling the stormwater for a duration, they discharge into this creek, which is the blue dashed line here, which then flows in a southwesterly fashion. Again, based on Mr. Osborne's analysis, he believes that the rate that that affluent would be discharged would be appropriate and the volumes coming out of those conveyances would not negatively impact the south, the southern development, any worse than existing conditions on site.
And can you show where the lift station would be on this map?
Yes. Give me just a second. It's right here, this square right here. And this site plan is tiny, but I believe the force main kind of goes up in this direction through here and then it connects to the force main. This is actually on the other side of the street in the development that you previously looked at until it finally gets to the public line to the north of the site. And again, I'd have to defer to the site plan preparer and engineer for any of the technical specs of that system.
Yeah, I think I see the heavy black line crossing the street there, I mean, crossing the road.
Yep, yep.
That would be about the spot.
Yep.
Yes. Good. You have the questions for Kirk.
One quick question, Mr. Vice Chair. Were there any comments from the citizens of Kernersville about this development at all at the hearing?
There were not. Well, I take that back. I'm not sure where the property owner to the south resides, if their, if their actual jurisdiction is in unincorporated Forsyth County or if the town of Kernersville approaches that area. But I believe that that resident lives in unincorporated Forsyth County.
Okay. I noticed in, was this three or four phases? It's sort of hard for me to read it. Contributed to my mature age.
It would be four phases, Commissioner.
Four phases, okay.
And Mr. Garrett may be able to provide more information as to the timeframe that he sees those building out in.
There were 226 units, did I hear that correctly?
I believe it was 216.
216. Okay. Thank you.
Any further questions? I think we're good. See, done. Thank you, Kirk. I think I've called you Eric a few times.
No worries. That's been happening for 41 years at this point.
Under, you're underscoring my era, I think. Eric, sorry about that. That's good. And in both the previous requests and this one, there were no comments received before today. People could write in and we did not receive any. So this is a public hearing and speakers will have up to 15 minutes total to speak in favor of this request, or up to 15 to speak in opposition. And again, is there anyone wishing to speak in favor of this request? Good, come back again.
Good evening again, or afternoon, I should say. I don't believe I gave my address in the last one. So Greg Garrett, here representing Sugar Homes, 221 Jonestown Road, that's 27104. Similar to the previous case, phone call to everybody that actually adjoins the property, had great conversations. The main concern that I got from the residents that I spoke to, number one, they don't want to be in Kernersville. Number two, and it's really just the hollow wells who are here today, they are concerned about stormwater. And there is a very large tributary that comes through this subject site and then goes on down towards Watkins Ford Road. And the way we chose to address their concern is in this watershed, we are not required to put in stormwater ponds. So those stormwater ponds that Mr. Erickson showed you, we were putting those in to address their concerns. So that's something that we're doing in addition to what your ordinance would require us to do. So I think that's real important to point out. It is 85 acres. Just to be clear, the current plan is 218 lots, so 218. And we're asking that it be rezoned from agricultural to RS15. Unlike the one to the north, that was RS9. This is RS15. We've got double the amount of open space that would be required. I think that's real important to push, to point out. And another thing, when you have storm concerns, I've always been an advocate for, there's several ways you can move the stormwater. One is you put it in a concrete pipe and you move the storm out that way, or you can create ditches. And what happens is if you utilize ditches, the water will actually trickulate down into the ground as it is moving out in the direction it's supposed to move out. And so what we're proposing at this, at this project, rather than do curb and gutter roads, we're proposing ribbon pavement, which, number one, reduces the amount of asphalt that we put on the property, which creates impervious surface. And number two, it also pushes the water to ditches along the road and so that water can absorb in the ditches as they go out into either the ponds that we are building or off into some other tributaries. So I think that's real important and I'm sure I've butchered how all that works, but my engineer is here again, I will mention that. And he can, of course, speak to any technical aspects about the storm. He has looked at specifically the, there is a pipe that has been overwhelmed by a recent storm, I think it was a hurricane, and washed over the road. And that's what the hollow wells will probably be speaking to you about. He is prepared to address that issue tonight, or today. Happy to answer any questions you might have.
Just to clarify something, if when you use the term ditches, that sounds like something that you found on a farm, but I think that, let me ask you if this is what you mean? You've got drainage ways, certain places you're going to put riprap rock and the rest of it would be seeded and that'd be the drainage ways. Is that correct?
That's correct. Yes, sir.
And so probably, and just in following up Commissioner Linville's point, is that you would have a lot of little culverts under driveways, probably?
Correct, for the driveways, yeah.
Which is what I have in my house. And I, and those occasionally get a little stopped up itself. I mean, so you have now an opportunity for each one of those little culverts to kind of get back up and create the same kind of problem that becomes each homeowner's responsibility to make sure that the ditch is not overgrown and that you're able to get through, get through that. Any other questions? I think I would like to hear you engineer talk about that.
Okay.
Are there other questions?
I don't have a question. I would like to make a comment. As Commissioners know, we have a fellow named Ted Kaplan, who's a whole world revolved around the subject you're dealing with here. But it was, I was pleasantly surprised when you responded ahead of the potential problem by saying you're going to do what you said you're going to do to relieve the problems, needs, and interests of the person who has recommended that there be something done. You're doing it. I don't, from my perspective, I don't hear that kind of thing very much. So I was pleased at least you're making the effort.
Thank you. Thank you.
Good. We'd love to hear from your engineer. Just give us your name and address, please.
Vince Townsend. Our Green Mountain Engineering is the name of the business, and we're at 7A Wendy Court in Greensboro. And I did a lot of the work on these plans, and our company put the plans together. So if you have any specific questions, I'll be happy to do my best to answer them.
Could you just talk some about your, and I understand several decisions relative to the ditch versus the curb and gutter issue. Obviously, there's a huge cost differential. But in terms of your design of those, I don't know if there's any way to better design those to prevent driveway clog ups on that. Maybe you can speak a little bit to how that part is designed.
Okay. The roads will be designed to NC DOT standards. Am I close enough to the microphone?
Yeah, thank you, sir. I was going to say, I can't hear you.
The roads will all be designed to NC DOT standards. And before NC DOT accepts maintenance of the roads, they'll have to be proven to have been built to their standards. And then, when we try to turn it over for maintenance, they will, again, re-inspect it and make sure the ditches are all, and shoulders and driveway culverts are all installed properly, and that they function properly. And if you're in an older subdivision, it may be the case where you have a driveway culvert that's partially clogged. In this subdivision, that won't be the case. They'll all be, the ditches should be graded properly, and the driveway culverts will be installed at the correct elevations and slopes. So clogging of the culverts will be very unlikely in this subdivision.
Other questions?
One question, Mr. Vice Chair. Could you just comment on a lift station standards, please?
Yeah, I can. I haven't designed one in Winston-Salem per the city standards, so I can't speak to those and how much they differ from the state standards. But I know that this particular lift station is large enough to require an onsite permanent generator to be installed. And there are a lot of safety features that the state requires on lift stations, because they don't want a failure any more than anybody else does. I think this size lift station may require radio telemetry, so that someone gets a phone call if the wastewater level in the wet well gets too deep, which would indicate a failure of a pump. And each of these lift stations will have two pumps in them. They're required to have duplex pumps, so if one pump fails, it'll continue to operate, you know, until the pump is replaced with another pump. And also, the generator ensures that it works when the power goes out. So there's a lot of assurances and safety measures that make sure it works permanently.
So you see no problem in comparing sort of your state specs with, and talk to the folks at our city-county?
I don't know specifically all of the additional requirements that Winston-Salem has. A lot of municipalities require specific manufacturers to provide all of the equipment, because they keep them on hand in case something fails, and they can replace them very easily. But in this one, you'll have a private company that has the equipment on hand to replace anything that needs to be replaced in the event of a failure. So I wouldn't worry about the lift station failing. It's going to be designed well, and it'll be inspected regularly and well-maintained.
I guess I was thinking that at some point, the HOA may be interested, if let's say the sewer lines are extended, which I think is probably inevitable at some point, and then the desire to have the city-county utilities simply take over the sewer, then if it's compatible, then the homeowners association says, yippee, and they don't have to pay any more dues for that, because basically then it's a part of the system.
Yeah. Well, ideally, we could build it to their standards, and the county utilities would take it over now. But they are unwilling to take any new lift stations in Forsyth County. And that's why it has to be private. If you would make them take it as a public one, I don't think the developer would protest at all.
Interesting. That's an interesting, interesting comment. So, well, it's good. Other questions? Thank you. We've got, we have five minutes left for any other comments for, that are in favor?
Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate that. All righty. Hearing none, we'll stop. And are there any comments, or we have at least one person who would wish to speak in opposition to the petition? So please come forward now. And just give us your name and address again.
My name is Jennifer Hollowell. I live at 175 Carvey Smith Road in Kernersville. I'm representing my husband, Thomas, and also the other residents of Carvey Smith Road, which actually comes out onto Watkins Ford. So, oh, and actually, funny story, the rest of the road is actually on an information call with another developer that's trying to buy another 80-some acres that wrap around the property and will adjoin this piece of property. So my husband and I own the 12 acres to the south of the property. The idle wild road branch cuts through the proposed development through our property, continuing on into other properties and going under Carvey Smith Road. So we are not against development, but we would like to see smart, sustainable, planned development. You know, our concerns are, have been addressed, the stormwater runoff. You know, we appreciate the developer has added the ponds. You know, of course, there's always concerns with that. You know, he'll be responsible for maintaining those. You know, if a problem in the homeowners association can't afford it, you know, what happens then? I know, you know, we're saying, you know, people will be, you know, paying dues and things, but, you know, we all know things happen. We've actually talked to a grader who works on ponds in the area, and he says the average cost to fix these ponds can be $50,000 to $60,000. And so this homeowners association is going to have to maintain those ponds and pump stations, you know, as well. I mean, we definitely don't want them to take out the ponds, you know, but, you know, that's just a concern. You know, in the report, you know, we submitted pictures, you know, in the back, and, you know, this was like what our road looked like during that 2018, you know, hurricane. Now, albeit, that was an extreme example, but it shows you of the volume of water that can come down through the area. And we would actually like to be able to get to our house, you know, back and forth. You know, again, traffic, Ogden School Road, it's a small country road. You know, Caleb's Creek is planning 2,000 homes. And from what I've seen, all the property's been purchased now. Not all of it's been developed yet. You know, mentioned that, you know, you can't tell which direction someone's going to go from a traffic study, which direction someone's going to go once they leave their development. But if they're thinking the traffic is going to go to 66, the end of Ogden School Road is a very small little area with homes, like almost on the road, to where it connects to 66, I think, has 12,000 to 13,000 trips on it, so if you're adding 2,500, you know, that's a pretty good percentage. As I mentioned, we were just notified that an additional 80 acres adjoining the property is potentially going to be annexed by the town of Kernersville and developed by Windsor Homes with access onto Watkins Ford. So it just seems like the town of Kernersville in this area, town of Kernersville in Forsyth County, are developing in weird ways. I mean, there's like, you know, here's Forsyth County, here's Kernersville, here's Kernersville. It's just very odd. You know, I've looked up some, you know, traffic studies, you know, from the town of Kernersville. This is from 2018. It says currently, all major intersections south of I-40 are projected to fail. The street network south of I-40 is lacking a direct east-to-west connection between Union Cross and 66. They're calling for plans for Glen High Road to extend east through the mixed-use developments of Caleb's Creek and Weldon to 66 Bunker Hill. North Carolina DUT has reviewed and approved a 25% design of Ogden Road extension. There's another thoroughfare and street plan from 2018 that lists 2015 transportation project lists. Glen High Road extension to Teague Lane, Temple Road School, or Temple School Road extension to Teague Lane, Bunker Hill Road extension to Ogden School Road. I think these are all unfunded, but it shows like they think there needs to be roads, you know, coming back and forth. They also say, with the southern road network, with the anticipated relatively rapid growth in the area south of I-40, the town will need to pursue road improvements in additions to existing road networks. Without the implementation, I-40 will far exceed the capacity to carry future traffic, you know, will not be able to carry future traffic demands. You know, so, you know, we're putting these development, you know, it's just wherever anyone can get a foothold into property. Like I said, you know, I would like to be able to sell my property one day when I want to. So we're not trying to say we're against all development, but, you know, wherever you can get a foothold, and you're not thinking of the bigger planning, so if you put all these developments in, where are the, where are these new roads going to go? Let's see. And then also, you know, we'd like to see that variety of lot sizes. I mean, this particular area, I mean, we all have 10-acre, 4-acre, 5-acre track lots with livestock, horses, cattle. And actually, we've had a few lots go up for sale on our road already, just in the last month, had multiple offers on 4- and 5-acre lots. So, you know, there is a demand for a different type of, you know, rather than the wall of houses, you know, that you see coming up. Also, you know, it's really, the area is really getting, you know, going on its direction to be completely overdeveloped. And that's going to create dangerous situations with roads, schools, fire protection. You know, so those are some of our, you know, issues. We're also issued about, you know, the price points, you know, low 200 to 250, you know, compared to the other homes on the, on our development that are, you know, 350 to 550,000, and that's just property tax value. You know, we would like to acknowledge that Greg Garrett, you know, the representative for the developer, he's really listened to our concerns. And I think you, you know, touched on it, that, you know, he's, they're trying to be proactive. We've told them there's a water problem. I think it's pretty obvious when you see the size of the gullies coming through this property that's adjoining. And he has modified the plan and tried to help us with some privacy issues and, you know, water. But, you know, and as well as trying to keep like a 30-foot, the 30-foot buffer is undisturbed buffer. So while I'm sure our concerns won't change the outcome, you know, of your decision, I think Forsyth County and town of Kernersville still has a chance to make some smart, forward-looking decisions that you can be proud of, you know, later. You know, if we let this just, you know, wherever someone can get a foothold in to build, you know, just the wall of houses, I mean, 20 years from now, wouldn't you want to be proud of what this area is going to look like? Also, too, you know, it's just protecting the vulnerable Abbott's Creek watershed, you know, all of this water is going down. And I know there's regulations, but a lot of it's on average rainfall. Well, you know, rainfall doesn't fall on an average. It falls, you know, heavy, you know, there's always heavy rainfalls, and then it dries up, you know, for months. So, you know, those are just our concerns. And like I said, we do appreciate, you know, Greg Garrett working with us, but we just wanted to make our concerns known. If it's not going to help with this development, can we, can it help with, you know, the next one, and the next one, and the next one? Because there's still, you know, plenty of property out there that will eventually probably come up for development. So thank you for listening.
Could you correct me if I'm wrong? I just, as you, I can see where you're coming from, and you've got some excellent points. But basically, correct me if I'm wrong, what you're saying is, as it stands right now, not a problem. But as the years go by, and to use your words, a wall of houses begins to appear, that could have devastating effect on the quality of life where you live. Is that correct?
I mean, that's correct. And if you look at Caleb's Creek, you know, it's already, you know, it's, I think I counted 200 and some homes, you know, already. There are clearing areas getting ready to build as well. There are developments coming up Watkins Ford Road. And it's just a little confusing about where town of Kernersville jumps in to where Winston-Salem, you know, that, I mean, there, there's just like pockets all over the place, and they have different, they have different requirements, you know.
Let me ask our county attorney to jump into this, because there's got to be a solution in here somewhere. But there are some legal matters that would be faced. Let me ask you, basically, and you correct me if I'm wrong again, is that your opinion at this point, that she's suggesting the county and the town of Kernersville get together and see if there is a solution to what could become a growing problem, or whether it wouldn't? My question is, what are your thoughts on that?
That's a broader policy question as to how you want the county and the town of Kernersville to develop. And certainly, that is a very appropriate discussion for this board to be having with the town council of Kernersville. You know, I'm not really sure how we can address that with this particular development that's in front of you, the proposed development. But that is certainly always an appropriate discussion to have.
That's assumed that we approve what's being asked to be done. Is there room for negotiation after that's done, based on any kind of resolution that could be arrived at?
What's before you is a site plan. So once you approve that site plan, the builder presumably is going to build to that site plan. If you, you've already tabled the first matter, and so this one could be tabled also, and that could allow you some time to have discussions.
Thank you. That's all I wanted to know.
Perhaps I could ask, and Kirk, you can maybe hold this, we'll see if there's anyone else that wants to speak, but maybe to speak a little bit about the cooperation and the work and the coordination between Kernersville planning and the city-county planning. Just hold that in your thought. Thank you very much. Anything else you want to add?
No, thank you for listening to our concerns. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to speak in opposition? Seeing none, perhaps you'd like to, Kirk, maybe you'd like to say a word or two about the coordination of planning between the two.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chairman. Just to give this board some background on the subject, this particular property is in what's known as the Southeast Forsyth County Area Plan Update. This public policy guide was adopted by this board and other jurisdictions in 2014. And we actually did have collaboration with town of Kernersville staff, and there's references in this document to explicit land use recommendations of the town as they existed eight years ago. So certainly, the question is, have any significant changes happened in the last eight years that may lead the commissioners to want to revisit those things? Certainly, it's planning staff's policy and overall goal that, once we get to the next round of area plans after updating our comp plan, which is what we're just starting to work on now. Certainly, this plan was done under the legacy comp plan, and we try and do new plans under each comp plan. And as I mentioned, we're starting a new one that probably won't be brought for adoption to this board until 2024. If the commissioners feel that some sort of formalized plan or conversation is necessary prior to then, that's certainly an action that you all could take, and staff would be glad to participate in that. But I think from our perspective, we believe that the land use recommendations carried in this plan are still valid in terms of providing for quality of life that's appropriate with citizen expectations. One other thing that I would point out in terms of trying to anticipate how some of these different disparate developments integrate, as I mentioned on this site plan, you can see there's proposed street connections to the south, to the west, and to the east. On the other half, there was a proposed, when I say other half, north of Ogden School, there was a proposed connection to the north of that site. So the goal is that, as successive pieces of property come in, eventually, they will form an interconnected street network, so all the traffic won't be on Ogden School, or Watkins Ford, Teague, or 66. So those are some initial comments, but I'm glad to follow up any further.
Let me make a comment on that.
Let me make a comment on that. Frankly, what I'm about to say probably plays right in exactly what you're saying, but I live in Kernersville, and when I moved there 50 years ago, 5,000 people lived there. Today, almost 30,000 people live there, and that doesn't count the number of people who live within a one-mile radius of the town limit. So having said that, Kernersville being located between Winston-Salem, Greensboro, High Point, near the regional airport, da-da-da-da-da, is probably ripe for continued long-term growth. And if that's the case, then what this fine lady said a moment ago is probably going to become fruition long after I'm gone. But she's looking at, at the future, because, to use her phrase again, a wall of houses doesn't necessarily mean quality of life, but it does mean increased, increased property taxes. And from that perspective, I don't have a problem. But, and I'm not, I don't have, I do not have a solution to it, nor am I asking for a solution to it. Sometimes, it, sometimes it pays to take, take a step back, think about what you're doing on a long and short-term basis. And I don't know what to say, except what are your thoughts on that?
Well, I think, again, Chairman Plyler, I think that it does take, it's very a positive effect to take a pause and look at those things on a long and short-term basis. I mean, by definition, that's what the long-range side of planning is. A lot of times, you see us over here on the immediate planning initiatives with zoning cases and things of that nature, but we have a text amendment coming up right after this item. You've seen us bring area plans, and again, the legacy plan. So we're trying to balance, thinking of the present in terms of accommodating for residential growth of folks who want to live in our county, but also kind of thinking of the big picture, to use those words, and kind of what that long-term growth strategy is. And I guess one other thing that I would throw out that I forgot to mention in my earlier comments is certainly the transportation piece is a big part of this. The speaker before me mentioned that the comprehensive transportation plan and others are calling for some of those road improvements in the Kernersville area, and as she noted, those are currently unfunded projects. We've been trying to work with developers and get pieces of those projects as they come in, but as Mr. Ivey tells you, and he comes from time to time, it's very difficult to get the funding that the county needs to enact all of those road improvements simultaneously. So unfortunately, that's kind of been the best solution that planning staff has been able to affect in terms of changes to the road network.
So you're kind of damned if you do and damned if you don't.
Your words, not mine, sir.
Just one, one question, Mr. Vice Chair. I spent about a few decades teaching at Glenn High School, when there were cotton fields and a few tobacco fields along Union Cross Road a few years ago. So I've seen the development over the years take place, because I've retired since then. But in your reference to the legacy plan, is there any concept in that plan to have more of a uniform development versus the G X L development, as our previous speaker addressed?
That's absolutely in legacy. There's explicit recommendations in that document and in the Southeast Forsyth Plan that I was mentioning where this site's located for comprehensive development. I think our staff's contention would be that these two pieces on both sides of Ogden School Road, they make up, you know, over 100 acres and have several constituent pieces. That would meet our definition of comprehensive, just because, again, it's kind of hard to get, you know, 500 acres or something like the Weldon community that's being done to the north or Caleb's Creek. Those are kind of exceptions rather than the rule. But this development proposal is probably more on the comprehensive side of things than on the piecemeal, you know, 10-lot subdivision kind of things.
Yes, I, I saw on a TAC committee also, the Transportation Advisor Council, and the funding comes in sometimes on a 20-year basis, and then you got to wait and wait and wait and wait until another cycle rolls around. So there needs to be some work done on that whole process, because road structure is very critical to a community that's accustomed to certain, you know, quality of life, and that needs to be addressed in some capacity.
Any other questions? Thank you, Kurt. We're at the point of, of action on, on this second item. I think the question still remains on, oh.
He's got a, got a hand out there.
Yeah, well, basically, what's it relative to?
This case and some of the things of.
I mean, I guess relative to the planning side or relative to what more specifically? I mean, our, kind of our time, of course, we used up part of the time in talking to Kurt, so why don't you come up and you can finish right up? Just be, just be brief.
I'll be very brief, just a couple of final points. This project is for workforce housing. We need, we need more housing. I mean, you, you just pick up the newspaper. I mean, we're down to like, I think, just two or three weeks of inventory right now. So that's an important part, you know, it plays into all the stuff that's happening that we're blessed to have happening in our, in our community, but we need housing. The second thing is, I will, talking about comprehensive planning, in conjunction with this development, the, the southern part of Weldon is actually going to be developed and connecting to Ogden School. That's where we're going to tie into the sewer. They're going to bring it all the way up to Ogden School. And from a traffic standpoint, all of that is going to be coordinated between the two cases that you've heard this evening and the case or the Weldon, the Weldon South project. So with that comprehensive look, you know, all of the turn lanes that we will be required to put in by NCDOT, all of that's going to be looked at together, three projects looked at together. Also, as part of the requirement of the site plan approval, we are dedicating right-of-way for future improvements on Ogden School, so I think that's also important to note. And thank you for your time. I hope you agree with your planning staff and your planning board that this, this project, you know, meets all of the, the ordinances that are in place currently in, in land use plans.
Vice Chairman, I have one question for the gentleman, please.
Wait, one second.
Sir, you mentioned the word workforce, workforce housing. Is that the same definition as affordable housing or market rate?
Well, that's, that's a great question. I would say, I mean, we're looking at, at folks that are, that both husband and wife are, are working, and, and so they, they have, they need a dual income to provide for their family.
So you're working with them relative to their income?
I don't know if I can go that far, but, but that's what we're, that's what we're targeting.
I'm clear.
We're not, we're not, we're not going for 400, $500,000 houses. We're, we're not as low as what she quoted, especially with the way the material prices have been so volatile, but we're probably in the upper twos to low threes.
Okay, thank you. That was helpful.
Thank you.
Good, thank you. In the last, at the end of the previous one, the action was to table, simply to find out the, the comparisons between any differences in, I guess now, state requirements and our city-county requirements regarding the lift station. It is, I would make a motion that we table this one for the same reason, unless someone would like to add something else to that.
Mr. Vice Chair, I apologize. I was remiss in the earlier item. If you want, you may vote to close the public hearing on both items and, and table the decision for the next meeting.
I would make that motion.
Wouldn't the word be postponed?
Will postpone, but I mean, yes, that's.
Using the word postpone.
Go ahead and make your motion, Mr. Chairman.
Move that we postpone this until we make a decision on both items.
You've got to close the public hearing first.
And close the public hearing first.
Well, the, the public hearing is over, we're ready to entertain a motion. Thank you for your motion, Mr. Chairman. Is there a second?
Vice Chairman, I believe the attorney has signed us, have a motion to close the public hearing, and then we can have a motion to postpone.
How move we close the public hearing?
Second.
All in favor of closing the public hearing? Aye. Any opposed? Thank you. Now we're ready for your motion, which is a postpone, consideration of actually both zoning requests until the sewer question is answered. Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Good. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Thank you. One opposed? Thank you. We got that. Five to one.
And Mr. Vice Chair, if he could go back and if someone could make a motion to close the public hearing for F-1612, that would finish this off.
I would make that motion.
Thank you. Second. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Are there none? The first public hearing is closed. All right, very good. All righty, the third item on the agenda is a public hearing on an ordinance amending chapters five, six, and 11 of the United, UDS Unified Development Ordinances to revise provisions regarding general requirements for accessory structures and uses, parking requirements for dwellings, and the definition of attached and detached dwelling units. And the first speaker on this portion of the public hearing will be Amy Crumb, Planning and Development Services. Amy, thank you.
Good afternoon, Chair Plyler, Vice Chair Martin, Commissioners. I'm here to talk to you about UDO CC-15, which is a petition by the Planning and Development Services Department to amend chapters five, six, and 11 of the UDO relating to the definitions for dwelling unit and dwelling accessory, as well as parking standards for dwelling accessory, and then some other minor changes. So some background for you, in 2017, changes were made to the UDO to remove the occupancy requirements for accessory dwelling units, otherwise known as ADUs. This was based off of case law coming out of Wilmington at the time. At this time, the City of Winston-Salem changed its approval process for ADUs to a special-use district rezoning, which requires elected body approval. Before that, it had been a staff approval for a attached ADU and then a board of adjustment approval for a detached ADU. Since this time, only two ADUs have been approved by the city council. In response to concerns about housing availability, the city council asked staff to review and draft amendments to the ADU regulations that would, one, utilize best management practices for ADUs, align the city with its peer communities, and then remove any barriers to developing ADUs within the city. These changes were adopted in February of this year. While staff was preparing these changes, we became aware of some minor amendments that would impact the county ordinance, the first being the replacement of the current definition for dwelling unit with the original UDO definition for dwelling unit. As you may recall, we did the UDO clear code sort of reorganization of the UDO a couple of years ago. During this time, the consultant for the UDO clear code pulled the definition for dwelling unit from the environmental ordinance instead of from the regular definitions. We're just going back to the regular definition that existed prior to the UDO clear code reorganization. Removing the word occupancy from the definition for dwelling unit accessory, attached and detached, simply because it no longer applies, and then replacing the Director of Inspections referenced in section 5.3.1A with Director of Planning and Development Services. This goes back to, we no longer have a Department of Inspections. Inspections and planning were merged together a couple of years ago, and we came to Planning and Development Services Department, so we are just making a simple change to note the position change, title change. And then amending the parking requirements table to reflect the, that one parking space is required for an ADU in the county. To summarize, the city requested changes to the ADU provisions to help address housing availability concerns within the city limits. As part of this process, staff determined that there were minor amendments that needed to be made that would also impact the county jurisdiction. As the approval process for ADUs within the county was not changed with the 2017 UDO amendment, the county has not experienced any decline in ADU request or approvals since then. Currently, the approval process for an ADU in the county is a staff approval for an attached ADU and then board of adjustment approval for a detached ADU. Staff does not believe that any changes are necessary for the county ADU provisions, as we have not seen that decline that we saw in the city limits. Just to keep in mind that many of the lots within the county are larger lots, so when a resident is seeking to add additional dwelling units, they will simply just subdivide and create a, another lot that they can use for families, so they don't even have to go through these provisions. Or a lot of times, if they do want to put an ADU on their property, they utilize a manufactured home, which has to go through a board of adjustment approval anyway for a manufactured home. And then the proposed amendments will not impact the approval process in any way. They will still function exact same as it does now. The City-City Planning Board recommended approval at its November 20, 21 meeting by a five to two vote. The discussion at that meeting, at that public hearing, was focused solely on the city ordinance changes. No discussion was had by these minor changes at all. And with that, I will be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Amy?
I do have a question, Vice Chairman. So that I'm clear, there was parking address in the county, but what did the city say?
With the city, we actually, they voted to remove the one-space parking requirement.
They didn't put a limit on it?
No. So there's no parking requirement now in the city limits for an ADU.
Okay, you're enough. Thank you.
Good, any other questions?
Two quick questions, Mr. Vice Chair. The five-two vote, could you just comment what the two votes against it represented? What was the concerns?
Some of those concerns really had to do with the ADU size and then the parking requirement removal, as well as just sort of the public input process that was had at the time.
And the second question, I've been in a couple of committee meetings with concerns about affordable housing. One report says we're about 14,000 units short. Would this ADU impact that at all from your estimation?
The way ADUs are seen as what we call middle, missing middle housing, but basically, they, how they impact affordability for housing is by creating new housing options on one lot. So essentially, it allows for folks to have more stock in housing, which will affect price, but also allows for folks who maybe has a complete basement, a finished basement, now they can rent out that finished basement, and it allows them to afford to stay in the house, or also to allow them to maybe have family members or elderly residents, family coming in, they can stay in an ADU instead of having to look elsewhere outside and maybe take up another unit that could be available for someone else. So it's really in just providing ways for people to stay in the houses that they have and maybe afford staying in them through retirement, or also providing additional stock. So it's simply by supply, creating new supply.
Thank you. Any other questions for Amy? Thank you very much. All righty. This is the public hearing. Again, speakers will have up to 15 minutes total to speak in favor of this request, up to 15 minutes total, speak in opposition. The clerk has informed me there are no comments been received prior to the meeting. Is there anyone wishing to speak in favor of the petition? Seeing none, I'd like to ask, is there anyone wishing to speak in opposition to the petition?
Move we close the public hearing.
Motion to close the public hearing? Is there a second?
Second, yes.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. All righty. Now it's a matter we need to have action on the amendment. Is there, someone like to make a motion to that effect? No, there is not. In fact, if you want, I can make the motion that we actually approve the amendments to chapters five, six, and 11 of the Unified Development Ordinance, doing basically the, these small changes suggested in the presentation. Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Kaplan. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. All righty. The next item on the agenda is a resolution recognizing Forsyth County's 911 telecommunicators and emergency services in the sheriff's office during National Public Safety Telecommunications Week. And we have with us today, and with you all who come up, we have, if you're still here, if you have Herb Swain and, and Jessica Loman from Emergency Services, and Ashley Conrad from the sheriff's office, and I think Commissioner Alameen is going to read the resolution. Thank you.
You know, Mr. Chairman, they've, they've been here through this entire meeting and just finally got to stand up.
We have, we have.
Should we call 911 to help them?
And we do, we, we do have a small video we'd like to play for y'all.
Yes, sir.
If we can, if you all want to do it now, or we can do it after, whichever.
We could do it now or after the resolution, but you can do it now, you're there, right push the button. Thank you. Mr. Elamine?
Thank you very much, Mr. Vice Chair and Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. Resolution recognizing Forsyth County's 911 telecommunications caters in emergency services and the sheriff's office during National Public Safety Telecommunications Week. Whereas Forsyth County telecommunications serve the citizens of Forsyth County, North Carolina, by answering requests for law enforcement, fire, and all emergency medical services. Whereas Forsyth County telecommunicators are vital link for our sheriff's office deputies, firefighters, paramedics, and animal care officers by monitoring their activities by radio, providing them information, and ensuring their safety. Whereas Forsyth County telecommunicators have contributed substantially to the apprehension of criminals, suppression of fires, and treatment of patients. Whereas Forsyth County telecommunicators are professionals who work to improve the emergency responses, capabilities of communications through their knowledge and experience. And whereas Forsyth County telecommunicators exhibit professionalism, efficiency, and compassion in the discharge of their duties, especially this past year during the COVID-19 pandemic. Now therefore be resolved that Forsyth County Board of Commissioners hereby declares the week of April 10, 2022, through April 16, 2022, as National Public Safety Telecommunications Week in honor of the men and women of Forsyth County, North Carolina, who play a critical role in the protection and preservation of life and property, adopted this the 7th day of April of 2022. This is the motion before you.
I'll second the motion. Any discussion? On favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you all for being here.
Show your teeth, folks.
Congratulations, thank you.
All righty.
Thank you very much.
Thanks for all you do.
Thank you.
Appreciate it, thank you. Madam Clerk, do we have any calls on the phone for the public session?
Mr. Vice Chairman, we don't have any calls or cards.
Calls and our cards, I guess we outlasted those, my goodness. Are you tired to take a break, or are we ready to jump right into the meeting?
Let's take a small break.
Five minutes.
Five-minute break then, thank you. Recess five minutes.
We are ready to continue our meeting and here's our Vice Chairman, Don Martin.
Thank you. We're returning. We have one item to do, handle minutes. We're actually on item five, by the way, in case you got lost in the timeframe. We're on item five, approval of minutes. Is there a motion to approve the minutes?
So approved.
So moved by Chairman Pliler. Second? I'll second it. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. I talked to, just during our brief break with our county manager, and we actually have an item in our briefing that deals with a review to, of a letter to be sent to the Department of Health and Human Services. And basically, we have Chantel online. She's out of town. And we also have Rhett Butler, who is the chairman of the partners. They're both on the line. And from a time standpoint, as it's getting later, they'd like to address this letter. It is at your place. Copy the letter. It says basically to the, it's to Cody Kinsley, Secretary, North Carolina Department of Health and Human Services, et cetera, et cetera. And I can just tell you from being on the Cardinal Board, been briefed on this, and this is a serious issue. And I'm glad that Chantel's available online and also Rhett to both speak to why we should send this letter.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chairman, and good afternoon, Commissioners. Apologies for not being there in person today. I'm at the NACO conference with Commissioner Whizen-Hunt, but did not want to delay speaking with you in regards to the proposed design of the Children and Family Specialty Plan that the state is proposing. Time is of the essence for us to address these concerns with the state, especially because the Joint Legislative Oversight Committee is supposed to hear this topic on Tuesday morning. I do have with me Rhett Melton, Partner CEO, and Christine Daudel, our DSS Director. But I wanted to mention a few of the concerns that we have and why we have them. So the state is proposing a plan to provide mental health service delivery for foster youth, and is proposing to have one single entity manage the services for all foster youth in DSS custody for all 100 counties. So as you can imagine, you know, an organization, I'm not saying this is the organization that would get it, but an organization like Blue Cross Blue Shield would potentially manage mental health service delivery for all 100 counties, all foster youth. We do not believe that that is feasible, a feasible plan. We do believe in the regional system. As you are aware, you know, we just realigned with Partners effective November 1st. And so we want to continue the positive trajectory that we're having with Partners. We're making significant progress that we have not made with our previous LME MCO, Cardinal. We have been working with them on, you know, developing adult facility-based crisis center, trying to create a one-stop-shop model at our Highland Avenue Center for addressing mental health and substance use service delivery. And then we are working to open an emergency transitional home for youth in DSS custody to help with the placement issues that we've had for individuals, our youth that's sometimes stuck in the ERs or disrupt in various placements, along with many other initiatives. And so for us, we want to continue working with Partners and requesting that the state allow us to opt out of this statewide plan that they are proposing. I will tell you, I've spoken with several of our counterparts in other counties, such as Mecklenburg, who has already sent the letter. I attended a Health and Human Services Director meeting last week in Chapel Hill. You know, there are lots of counties that have concerns. And I'm not going to say every county. I do believe that some rural counties are supportive of the statewide plan, and it may make sense for them. But for Forsyth County, I do not believe this is in the best interest of our youth that we are responsible for at this time. And so what I will do is just pass it on to Rhett for him to just briefly describe the concerns of the LME MCO.
Great. Thank you, Chantel, and thank you, Commissioners, for the chance to be with you remote today. And I do, Chantel, I do appreciate the passion that you brought to this conversation for the citizens, the kids of the county. And we share that belief that the best care for these kids is local. And that's what, you know, as we've talked with you Commissioners and with leadership in the county, going back to your decision to join Partners, we always talked about that's our model, to be embedded in the county, to be working alongside the county. And Forsyth is different from Davie, from Gaston, from Iredale. So we believe the solution for these very challenging cases is to maintain building out those successes that we've started on at the local level. The partnership with DSS is of utmost importance to Partners as an organization. We truly see them as our partner. And the system is not perfect. And certainly, we have continued rooms and opportunities to grow, but we're making great success at doing that. And I think it'll take multiple steps back if this is taken out of, taken out of the community level and operated as a statewide approach. As Chantel mentioned, time is of the essence. One of the things that we have learned, and Commissioner Martin will appreciate this, when I presented this to our Board of Directors in February, the Commissioners that were on our board and many of the other people that were on board had not heard of this from any of their associations, from the County Commissioners Association or from the, some of the DSS associations. So this has kind of come up as a surprise for a lot of people. And as they've learned the details about really what's at stake, I think that's where people's voices are now being heard. And it is critical, because the plan is for there to be a request for proposal delivered as early as this summer. As Chantel mentioned, some of the legislative officers are getting attention, and they're getting voices. And I think it is, it's important to let those county voices be heard. Of the 14 counties that we have, I haven't heard from any of our counties that they're supportive of this. And that includes a combination of rural and urban. So we are hearing a lot of opposition, a lot of, a lot of success that's being built at the local level that all these counties don't want to go away. So just, I absolutely applaud the effort, Chantel and Commissioners. I certainly hope that you will consider having your voice heard, because that's much more important to the people that are making the decision than my voice. Your voice will carry a lot more weight.
Thank you, Rhett. And so our, my request today is for the Commissioners to support the letter, for Chairman Pliler to sign it, if you all are in agreement today, for Clerk to the Board, Ashley Sloot, to email to Secretary Kinsley, Deputy Secretary Richard, and copy our legislative delegation, as well as NCACC Executive Director Kevin Leonard. Because I have been told that NCACC has been supportive of the plan, but I also do not believe that they have been speaking to all of the counties in regards to their concerns. And with that, Rhett, myself, or Christine would be happy to answer any questions.
Quick, thank you, Chantel and Rhett. Quick question, Rhett. Do you still feel positive that as the, as the letter suggests, that Dave Richards, the Deputy Secretary, that clearly they believe there should be a provision to opt out, and that that's, the opt-out option will exist?
Yeah, I haven't heard the details of that. I definitely like that as an alternative if the plan was to be enacted. I think that the wisest strategy is to, the first, and I really probably in three parts, if I might say. The first part, I think the wisest is to abandon the idea and let the population be managed by the LME MCOs that will begin to operate the Tater Plan starting December the 1st. Just one side note, the plan...
That's a good question. Chantel, can you hear us?
Can you hear me, Dr. Martin?
Well, we can hear you now. We just, we lost your audio briefly.
Okay.
We heard your first point, your first point, your first point was to simply not do it. And that's where you went at.
Correct. Thank you. Okay. And part of that is, I think by doing it the way that we're describing, to keep it local, we can start to implement change and continue to build those things now rather than waiting a year, which is what the state's plan would create. The second, the second alternative, I think, would be to delay the decision that the state kind of punts this, if you will, for 18 months or so. There is so much change and chaos in the system right now, and so much going on, that adding another level of change for this very critical population is not wise. So if they're not going to leave it in the system that it's in now, I think kicking it down the road and letting the system become more stable would be good. If that doesn't happen, coming to your point, I think the third best option would be to allow those counties at the local level to opt out of that plan if it ever did come to fruition. So short answer to your question is I haven't heard enough detail to give me comfort that that's truly going to be an option. But I think if that, if it comes to that, we need to get more clarity on it.
Okay, that's good. Thank you. Any questions, other questions for Rhett or Chantel particularly?
Just a 30-second comment, Vice Chair.
Sure.
You know, with the current crisis among our youth, I don't say this idea helps them at all. So I'm going to support the, support the letter, like I'm sure some other Commissioners will. But I'm just curious, who started this insane, well, who started this proposal? I'm just curious. Who, where's it coming from?
So I'll start, and then Rhett and Christine probably knows more than I do. So I believe this stemmed, honestly, from almost two years ago, when all of these counties were having their challenges with Cardinals. So it's gone back that far. And honestly, if you would have asked me two years ago, prior to us even considering realignment, I would have said, sign on. Anything's got to be better than what we currently have. So it's possible we may have supported it at the time. But things have drastically changed in two years. You know, we've had COVID, we have realigned, we now have a responsive LME MCO that's working to address the concerns that we've had. By no means is it perfect, but are we really making great strides? Absolutely. So I believe it stemmed from that time and part of just the whole package of managed care. And so Rhett, I'll, Rhett, Christine, I'll let you interject with anything else that I may have missed.
No, I agree. I agree. I think that's 100% probably where it started. And again, Dr. Martin would, would recognize this. Some of our, some of the most vocal partners, opponents to this have been the newer counties. They came with us, and they've seen that, I think they too would have been in the same position. I think Mecklenburg would have been in the same position you just commented. But now they say, now everyone sees, you know, the local solution actually is the best one. And going back, Commissioner, to your, kind of the genesis behind your question, I do believe that this is not focusing on the real problems, you know, to really attack what the challenges are. I think we, as a community, have got to figure out, looking back upstream. We have way too many kids in foster care as a state, and we have way too many broken homes, and we have way too many challenges that, you know, rather than trying to create beds and create places for these kids to go, we as a community have an opportunity to look, look much more creative and look back upstream. And how do we keep families stable? And how do we keep kids out of the trauma that they experience by bouncing from foster care to foster care? I think that's where the real solution is.
Any other questions? Thank you all for being on the phone. I think, in fact, I'll ask this order, and this is, this is not an agenda item. It was to be on our briefing, but it is time-sensitive. In terms of, we can just have a consensus to send the letter, which we have done before, and have the Chairman sign it. Is there any need to do anything else?
Yeah, since you're, since you're actually informal session, I'd suggest you go ahead and make a motion. And that way, you've got a record that the full board approved the action. We were going to do it by consensus in the briefing session, but...
Great. Well, I would make a motion that we approve sending the letter before us to both the Secretary of the North, of the North Carolina Department of Health and Human Services, and also Dave Richards, the Deputy Secretary, and have the, hopefully the Chairman sign today.
I'll second the motion.
Second by Chairman Pliler. In discussion?
Yes, I can't let this go. I'm in favor of the letter, but the policy that you wrote makes this an act that we cannot do. So you may want to suspend the rules.
Yeah, it does, it does have, and the part that I wrote does have an item that deals with emergency situation items that need to be responded to at the request of the county manager, as I recall. So let me ask the county manager. Do you, would you agree with, we need to execute this issue today?
I think that the only thing Commissioner Campbell's saying is maybe as part of that, just a motion to suspend the rule, you know, to modify, to take action. But I'll look to our county attorney on that. But, but I do think it is important, we can do it by consensus or by action.
There is a provision for emergency items that can skip either one or both briefings. So that is an option.
And does it require that we suspend rules, or can we just simply take action?
No, it does not. You would be required to suspend, well, not even to suspend the rules. You'd need a supermajority to allow a new matter to come before the board without briefing. But this is an emergency. So, well, if you determine this is, this is an emergency, it wouldn't require that.
Right. I think we, clearly something's going to be decided next Tuesday with a communication as an emergency. Already had a motion and a second, and discussion. Are we ready to vote?
Ready.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you.
Very good.
All right, Mr. County Manager, we are now ready to turn the meeting over to you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Vice Chairman, members of the board. We do have some business items for consideration this afternoon, a fairly routine set of, set of items. So I'll go ahead and dive into them. Agenda item, let me ask...
We're on seven now.
Do we have anything for public session, or did I?
We had no comments on the phone, are in public, and I skipped that item on my script to get to the...
Okay.
So we went back and acted on the minutes, and we did have no public comments.
All right. So we're all good. All right, very good. So Agenda Item 7 is an amendment to the fiscal year 2021, 2022 budget ordinance that appropriates fund balance to transfer parks, performance budgeting incentives to the 2020 Motor Vehicle Mobile Equipment Replacement Capital Projects Ordinance. You've got the associated amendment to the Motor Vehicle and Mobile Equipment Replacement Capital Projects Ordinance, and accept a transfer from the General Fund for Golf Maintenance Equipment. This would provide for half of the surplus generated by golf of $223,405 to be used to basically replace golf equipment, which was not in the budget because, last year, because we waited to see what would happen with the golf operations.
Great. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Commissioner Elamene. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Linville. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
We've got one item under the grants topic. It's a resolution authorizing the execution of a grant agreement from the State of, from State Capital and Infrastructure Fund, which was the SCIF fund from the state for capital projects at Smith Reynolds Airport. It's the $23 million that was included in the state budget. 11 and a half million is going to be available to Forsyth County in FY '22. 11 and a half will be available in FY '23. This essentially budgets those funds.
Prove approval. Motion by Commissioner Pliler.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Elamene. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Agenda Item 9, you got a number of contracts items. Agenda Item 9 is a resolution authorizing an agreement with Avcon Engineers and Planners Incorporated to provide construction phase services for the rehabilitation of Runway 15-33 at Smith Reynolds Airport. That project is, this is for the construction oversight of that, where the milling of existing asphalt and the new pavement and the drainage services in an amount that was bid through that process of $370,987.24.
Move approval. Second. Motion by Chairman Pliler, second by Commissioner Elamene. Is there in discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Item 10 is a resolution awarding a contract to Sharp Brothers, Division of Viteleo and Grogan Incorporated for rehabilitation of Runway 15-33 at Smith Reynolds Airport. This was competitively bid with the lowest responsive and responsible bidder for a contract not to exceed 8 million, $6,806,999, with change orders not to exceed $340,305.
Move approval. Second. Motion by Commissioner Pliler.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Linville. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Item 11 is a resolution ratifying and awarding a contract for the purchase of 24 interceptor police pursuit vehicles in the never-ending saga of trying to obtain some vehicles, which seems to be difficult. It is a North Carolina state contract purchase in the amount of not to exceed $695,702.40.
Move approval. Second. Motion by Chairman Pliler, second by Commissioner Elamene. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Item 12 is a resolution authorizing the execution of an engagement letter and audit contract with Cherry Beckett LLP to complete the annual independent audit for Forsyth County for fiscal year 2021, 2022, subject to approval by the Secretary of the Local Government Commission. This was recommended by the Audit Committee. It was bid in accordance with North Carolina general statutes. The year one cost, a three-year contract, the year one cost is $108,000.
Motion, please.
Move approval.
Motion by Chairman Pliler.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Linville. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, any opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Item 13 is a resolution approving the purchase of additional Microsoft subscription software services. You got an amendment to, item B and C are both amendments to different funds to move the money around. After this was briefed, we actually had the budget meeting with Gary Koontz and MIS folks. This came up in that meeting, and staff at this point is asking you to continue this item or table this item, just because we want to make sure the full implications are understood in that FY '23 budget that we're working on now. And so if possible, I'd just ask the board to consider a motion to table this.
Move, table the agreement as proposed by the county manager.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner, Chairman Pliler, second by Commissioner Linville, to postpone item 13 until a later date. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
And item 14, you heard from Manu Barnett describing the ordinance revising Chapter 3 of the Forsyth County Code entitled Air Quality Control from the Forsyth County Environmental Assistance and Protection. And this is really consideration or coordinating with the North Carolina Division of Air Quality and those regulations, and also the Title V permit fees and application of permit fees as well.
Move approval. Second. Approval by Chairman Pliler, second by Commissioner Elamene. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
You got three reports. Item 15, the emergency purchase order report for at-home COVID-19 test kits. Report on item 16 on franchise solid waste collection service report. And then item 17, Winston-Salem Forsyth County Housing Consortium renewal.
Move, approve.
Motion to approve reports. Second. Commissioner Linville, second by Commissioner...
Pliler.
Excuse me, Chairman Pliler. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Move, we adjourn.
Motion to adjourn, second. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Now we're ready for the briefing session. Do we need to take a break, or are we ready to go?
Ready to go.
Ready to go.
Mr. Vice Chairman, we do need to take a break so MIS can change the system.
I thought there was something we needed to do.